Let's start with the library's presentation. And Alice, let me know if you can hear them. If you can't, we'll hit... oops.
I can. They're going to make a presentation.
Right, so if you can't hear them, let me know and I'll go stand by them.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I mean, I want to know if it'll work.
What? Is what on?
My box show.
You want to pass that?
You know, and actually, if you want to like go cut it to the side, so that you... Otherwise, you get the butt cam that's recording it. And, you know, we have a lot of people, especially for these meetings, that would like to see your face. So, um, all right. You want to take it away?
All right. Well, my name is Alyssa. I know many of you, but maybe some of you don't know me. I've been the library director since February, but I have been there for three years in one capacity or another. I think you just got our document put in front of you, so I'm just going to give you a little rundown of what it says.
Can you hear Alice?
I can.
Okay.
Um, oh, and this is our board treasurer, Paul.
I'm Paul Kedbergger. I'm the treasurer of the board of trustees of the Crafton Public Library for the last four months.
But he's been great.
And this is... yeah. Position I held for a while.
We're lucky to have him. So, we're asking for an increase of $12,000 for a total of $82,000 for the 2020 fiscal year. Over the last year that I've been in charge, we have been able to make a lot of changes in our staff. That was one of those changes, in our space and in our programming. So you'll see your documents have broken down into those three sections. Along with hiring me as a full-time director, we also hired a full-time youth services librarian. Both positions had been part-time previously. So now we are providing the residents of Crafton and Thornburg and Ingram and whoever's coming into our doors with at least one master's degree in library professional at any given time. So that's exciting. You know, people will need help with technology. I've helped Fred with his iPhone before. You know, we actually helped Phil's wife today pick out luck for Gus. And discerning trust toward the information in today's, you know, when everything's crazy and you can never tell what's true. So, we're excited to be able to provide that. So along with our staff, we currently do not provide medical benefits to our employees. We would like to explore that option in the future and more money would definitely help us do that.
Yes, that was something near and dear to my heart when I was on the library board. So am I beginning to... that's still... we're still plugging away for that?
Yes.
Actually, Algen County Library Association, in their new strategic, three-year strategic plan, has a mind in there to pursue that as a group, some kind of group benefit.
Glad you do that, because we were, we were, we were talking to them about that.
Yeah, it's come up in various...
So hopefully they'll be able to offer a program that's affordable.
Right, and they would be doing the overhead much the same way they do the overhead for several of our other services.
Right, right.
If we can take advantage of that, that would be very cost-effective and very...
So when do they think they're going to have that ready to discuss?
Um, I don't know. They just, they just, three weeks ago, approved their new strategic plan. So I don't think they're, they're in the process of getting, gathering information and putting committees together in order to get it into effect. So they really didn't say anything at the quarter of the meeting, ACLA quarter of the meeting about it, but it's been approved as something that they do want to investigate. There's a, many libraries are in the same situ... smaller libraries are in the same situation in terms of those kinds of benefits.
Super, I'm glad you're nice in the process. Have they got their, have they posted their strategic plan yet?
I believe so.
I think it's out there. I know it's out there on their Wiki. I don't know if it's out there on their general website.
But we can share that with you if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, well, I'll look it up here. Yeah, that'd be great. I'm always interested, long, long, long time interested in looking at this portfolio.
Are there any other questions? Yeah?
Go ahead.
I can wait until then to be presentation, but I do have a question.
Go ahead, because I've just been commenting along like I'm having a conversation.
Okay. So it's given that our library is supporting basically multiple communities and especially Ingram. My understanding is if we teamed up with Ingram, there may be some additional rad money. Is that true?
Um, so there are a lot of hoops to jump through to...
Yes.
Paul and I were just talking about this downstairs, to take another community under our belt. For all the communities that don't have libraries, they default to CLP. So, you know, anything that would come to whoever goes to CLP. So it would be a long process to explore, but ultimately that was...
I could interject a little something here, because there was actually a term of work done and we were pretty close a couple of years ago for all the changes we've had in the last couple of years. So, as you probably know, part of it is, and you may have discussed it as well, or I may have discussed it too in the past, what Ingram would have to do is there's a form to adopt the Crafton Public Library and there's a requirement, and I'm sorry, but I don't remember what the minimum per capita is.
Five dollars.
Five dollars. So we have to talk Ingram into being willing to take your five dollars ahead in order to make that happen. So there's five dollars ahead.
Per resident, is that what that means?
Yes, yes. And that's, you know, we're significantly above that in our contributions. So that's what it would take to, you know, to have Ingram officially adopt, which then gives you a little more, and then there's more rad money based on that, that headcount.
And what we could also do is take a look at some of the data that ACLA provides in terms of who uses our library.
Right.
And we may be able to get some data that demonstrates actually that...
It was there a couple of years ago, and we do have, we have heavy usage from Ingram. We do. I'm sure that hasn't changed.
Would it be possible to send Ingram's council a letter asking for their support or a consideration?
I think that's a very worthy thing to, to work on in 2020, absolutely. I think something that, that I, when I was on the board, we were working toward. And I, you know, it got pushed to the side, you know, just with, you know, both council changes and changes in the library. So, you know, I think that's definitely something.
And, and we would also work with ACLA on that too, because they have a vested interest in making sure that everybody in the county has a place to go for library services. So it's, it's kind of a three-way working arrangement where if they showed interest that we'd take them over, ACLA would, would...
Help facilitate.
Help us do that.
Right, but, yeah. But first we have to...
And it's about budgeting money.
Yeah, so, so basically, I think it's a, it's something that council can step up and, and do, council to council, because it will be their council that will make the decision.
Yeah, I know last year, when I still was Sanucci, president of Ingram's council, he wanted something that would be centrally located. And I know the discussion with the library and their lease and all those questions around the facility are still out there, and then there's a potential development.
I mean, I think anything like that is so far out there. I mean, basically, what these people can probably prove is that the, you know, same like...
There's some supporting data.
It says that Ingram residents are coming here. Where is located now?
Hmm, okay.
So, you know, I think...
Twenty minutes before this meeting started, we were over in the library. There were a couple from Thornburg that I know, and we were talking to them. We told them we were coming to this meeting, and, and they said, well, this, you know, and they're from, they, they're here all the time.
Yep.
And they said, does Thornburg give you anything for that? And I said, no.
Yeah.
It's just we're here for anybody who walks in the door.
Right.
And we, we do certainly walk Thornburg.
So that's, you know, I think that's a leadership thing that we could take on in 2020. And I know that, you know, we have some of our new council members who are also very supportive of the library. So I've, you know, I suspect we can make some pro advances next year on that score.
So along the roster, we'd have to find out what they want in the, you know, demographics and then be able to support what they want.
Right, yeah, so I think if they, you know, if they simply get that, you know, get that...
Cool, thank you.
All right, so...
Are you done then? Are you so... no, so, okay. That's moving along, but I like it to be a conversation, you know, less intimidating than a public speech, so.
There you go, there you go.
So that's kind of what we have for staff. You know, we really want to be able to maintain the quality of people by compensating them competitively. I mean, half the time you can go work at Target for better than you can work at a library. So we really want to be able to keep quality people to build relationships.
And that is the story true across all libraries.
It is, it is. So we are hoping that we can keep good people at our library. And we have some good people, so you should all come and meet them sometime if you haven't yet. So next, our physical space. We have been working from group inside of the library all year, even before that. We just want to make it more comfortable, more welcoming, you know, give the people what they want. We started by using things that we already own and a roll top desk generously donated by Phil and his family to make our front room that used to house the Historical Society into a little coffee shop. So now it's a little cafe area where people can get some Keurig.
Oh, Alice likes that.
It's nothing fancy, but you know, we turned the room from a glorified storage closet into a space that people are really enjoying. You know, it's become a quiet study room. It's, it's seen so much use, and we're super glad that, you know, we've been able to do that with things that we already owned and were generously given. So that was super exciting. We also got a corporate contribution from FedEx. It was actually in 2018, but the purchases got made in 2019. So we got to remamp our children's room for its tenth anniversary this summer. It was all new furniture in there.
That was 10 years ago that we did that.
So we got to remamp that all new furniture and new toys. The dump truck is still there, but maybe if you give us more money, you can buy a new one. So that's really exciting. We also were able to upgrade the seating at our computers, which was sorely needed. The chairs were falling apart daily, so we got eight new chairs in there and eight new chairs in our programming room, which I'll get to later. But one of the statistics that we found really striking was that our computers have the second highest use in the county with 44.13% usage of the time that they're available.
Okay, so that statistic, as we were, you had mentioned that. So what it is, is it's the percentage of your capacity.
Right.
So bigger libraries, so what we're really talking about is we're using what we have to a high, to one of the highest levels of capacity. Not that we physically have the most hours in the whole county.
Right, right.
Okay, great.
You can't compare apples and oranges, but what you can say is the people of Crafton, and they're probably pretty much local people, that's a service that they're actually using. And we don't have data, but anecdotally, there's a lot of turnways. And what we really like to do is go back to ACLA and say, we've got money, we, we want to buy furniture, we want to buy devices, we want, we want to increase our internet connection for our users in the library, for people who, for one reason or another, don't have that at home or come in to print something off or, I mean, I've seen people there, they're, they're there every day using, I mean, kids can game on them. One of the things we're sort of looking at and we want to do is we want to, we see, you walk in the library in the middle of the day, you'll see a kid, you think, why isn't that child in school? Why are they here in the library? Because they're homeschool. And they're coming in here to get that augmentation, either by using the databases here or something else here, or combining it with some of our print resources. And we'd like to try to build that into like a program, but if we need, we need the computing capacity in the library to do that. So, I mean, these things build on other kinds of initiatives that we really want to get into, but we need a sustainable, we need a way to sustain. You can't just do it for six months of the year and let it go the last three months of the year, because you're running out of money at your budget. We need a sustain.
Any questions?
No, keep going.
Okay. So we want to hopefully upgrade our computers, as Paul said. So the positive feedback we have received in 2019 has us looking forward to what we can do in 2020. We focused totally on the children's room. Now we want to focus on our teens. We've got the kids, we've got the parents. We're kind of missing that little, that middle piece. We're not missing the kids, they are in there. They are constantly being told to behave, but that's okay. I'll tell them 999 times. But the space that we have for them isn't really welcoming to teens. It's, you know, the leftover furniture that got pushed out of the children's room. It's, it's even the old shelves that are from when the children's room wasn't a room and was the back corner of the library. So we really want to, in 2020, be able to make a space that is welcoming to teens. And I'm sure many of you know, the high school doesn't have a library anymore. So I think we're really seeing the kids come into our library to kind of fill that void. Whether they're heading out, they're moving home or in a hurry, but they're there.
Question. Does the school district, do you need furniture? Let me ask that question. Do you need furniture or what do you need?
Furniture, yes. I think our furniture's been with us since we moved to Rocktop in 1996 and maybe even before then. It is so old and ratty, and we'd love to be able to out-trade it.
I was just curious, is there any surplus from our school district that could be donated to the...
Well, we could certainly, we could certainly, I don't know, you've reached out or...
I have not, no. I didn't know if that was, that existed.
Or we could, or we could find if there's any corporate sponsors or anything that...
I think they still have a room up there that they aren't able to go into.
Where is that, the library situation?
Yeah, right.
At the high school?
Right, but I'd like to circle out that.
Oh, it's still very much a room. What they did with the furniture in it, that furniture is no longer present in the library. There is no longer, that furniture is there, so.
So can we reach out to the school board and see what becomes your brand? I mean, that was, you know, that was a concern when I was on, that things were changing and there wasn't as much access, and we were seeing more usage at the library. So certainly related to that ongoing need.
Well, not only our teen section, but it was one of kind of, I don't know, upgrade the whole library. Like I said, a lot of that furniture has been there, probably longer than I've been alive. So we'd love to be able to do that, and obviously more money would help. I thought I'd room, which...
I just wonder, there's, there's such a small amount relative to a big office of furniture that you're looking for. There's a number of providers that are office solutions companies that kind of lease the stuff out and cycle it back and forth. I wonder if there's a way to enter into a program, like what is it, Mount Lebanon Office? So there's many companies like that. I wonder. Oh, okay, well, Construction Junction.
But they don't intend to have, I think, the kind of stuff, but there are, there are others.
Things that have been in use that are, you know, just not in preference, because they wanted their new office to look like Google, but it's still great furniture.
A, a great place for that is University of Pittsburgh's surplus property.
Right.
Anytime they renovate an office, they store the furniture, it never goes back. They always buy new. So, I mean, there's plenty of places to do that, and it's not expensive.
Forever.
There's a lot of ideas out there. Forever.
Thank you. So the last space in our finance section is programming. We were also able to honestly upgrade our programming room. We also got the same chairs that we got for the computers, and those have been awesome. We just got a nice bright rug and a few floor lamps, and we just, we made sense of what turning off the products and lights and turning on a light bulb does. But that's been really amazing for us, because we have seen such major raises in our programming this year. You'll see the numbers that our average this year is 400 people per month approximately, and last year at this time it was only 280 people. So I think that's a big change, and we're only hoping to see that grow. And we especially think that's going to grow, because we were chosen with just five other libraries in central Indiana to become a family place library. And family place libraries seek to, I want to get it right, because I use their exact tagline, build foundations for early learning. And that's not only for kids, that's for their parents too. The parents need the support to be able to raise the youngest kids. You know, you get a baby and you're like, what do I do with it? So we want to be able to provide that support to them, whether it be a nutritionist, a doctor, a dentist, a sleep therapist, a speech therapist, you know, whatever it is. Their biggest program is called the Parent-Child Workshop, and basically it's an informal setting where the information and resource professional comes in and just has conversations with the parents while the children play. So we're really excited to be able to implement that program into the library along with all the other great things that come with being a family place library. But we don't only want to invest in family place, we want to invest in all of our programs. You'll see in the document that we historically spend 2%, oftentimes less of our budget on programming, and often we make them happen for no money at all, which, I mean, is good, we're resourceful. But we want to be able to invest in our programs so that the people of Crafton can get more out of them. And a lot of times, we don't have the expertise on our five-person staff.
So, members of council were receiving magazines, honestly, from the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. These are magazines. And there was a grant in, I believe it was like the February edition, and it's, there's a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Education for boroughs to apply for. And I was thinking, maybe in 2020, the borough and the library could work together, and maybe that would be a good, you know, funding source and see what we qualify for and see what you need. And hopefully, maybe in 2020, we could get our application in there, especially if you're getting this type of recognition. And then maybe in 2020, you know, between the library, board, and council, we can have a concerted effort to solicit corporate sponsorship. I know my corporation has its own library internal. We see the value in libraries, and I know there's a lot of other corporations that relocated to their region and that have historically been here that have frequently been patrons and philanthropists of the library. So I, I just feel as if we need to continue on with that momentum. And I know Madame President here has been a supporter of the library with her own business and making contributions. So we, we need to, you know, continue to call on those resources to help, because I can tell you as a child, as a parent of a child who has some needs, my son Gus, he's a speech therapist, and he's now seeing a group therapy leader down there in the library. It, it is very great that our community has that, and I'm very thankful that we do have that community resources, because a lot of communities don't have that public space for the kids to meet. And it's one of the things that makes Crafton a lot of the life that they have. So I, I hope this, this council and the next council will continue to support you. But I would really like to see us look into that grant.
But we can definitely...
Yeah, we can, we can take that up, up line.
Do we, do we know what grant we're talking about?
It's...
Because we have to look it up.
Yeah, yeah. But I just wanted to say, the, the value, you know, proposition that you're bringing, I think we all hear it, and hopefully through this budget meeting that comes after your presentation, we can, you know, find it in our hearts and continue.
So, sorry, that's your presentation?
Yeah, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. One question. As I'm looking at the statement of financial position, because this has changed a little bit since ACLA took it over, I'm assuming that the line item under investments, given the amount looks to be about what we used to call our capital reserve fund. And then I saw a bit further back here. I just wanted to, because, you know, in over the last couple of years, anything that we've gotten with the finances in it, you know, any, any numbers, really wasn't showing that account. And so I'm pretty worried about it, so.
Oh, it's fine.
It's good.
I see that. I see that.
I, I, I'll give you a little background. I've only been the treasurer for like four or five months. And the previous treasurer, we met with the guy at PNC that handles, handles our investments.
You're the new, the investments, yeah.
And basically, the way that the previous treasurer put it works, our, our investments are there, it's, it's like a, it's like a backstop against a catastrophic act.
Rainy day fund.
So rainy day, it's, it's, yes. It's not, it's not saying we actively transfer money in and out of. We don't really transfer money into it. We use any money we get for operating the library. That's just there in case, for some reason, if we decided, if the borough decided and we were part of it to move to a new spacious library, whatever, then that money is there to help out with that.
And I would give you another scenario, because a couple of, a few years ago, when I was on the board, remember when the state budget was, took months and months?
Yeah, things like that.
There, there were organizations that would have, that actually did have to close down, because they didn't have the resources. And so that actually is almost, it's almost six months of operating expense. I mean, so I remember we were looking at that and wondering that we were going to have to dip into that a few years ago. Fortunately, that budget came through before our money ran out.
Yeah, things like that do occur.
Yeah, so I am, I'm relieved to see that line.
The grant's called the Keystone Grant, and it's the 2020 Keystone Grant cycle opens early 2020. So we have, it seems as if you guys and the world have some homework to do.
If you could send that link to Alyssa.
Yeah, and it says that we need to submit a completed letter of interest postmarked by December 20th of 2019.
But I, I think we should take, we should take a look at the parameters of the use for that money.
Yep.
Before we...
Yeah, and there's a guy, it does have a link. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Just wanted to say, I, this is a good report. I appreciate, I appreciate nicely designed reports. I'm a good designer myself, but hey, since you've got one of your board members here, I'll just knock you out a little bit. I just really enjoyed working with Alyssa anytime that we had the opportunity to collaborate, like on the I Heart Crafton block party.
That was super fun, we should do it again.
Yeah, which I heard maybe somebody here was clippering, perhaps?
Yeah, we might want to go through that again. We want to retain Alyssa.
It was, it was, yeah, kids, don't watch this budget meeting, no. You guys just had a, you had a really awesome setup, you know, it was a really wonderful draw. My mother-in-law is a retired children's librarian, and she geeked out over when I sent her the little reading circle photo. So, you know, I, I just think that it's really nice when we can collaborate on events like that and make sure to kind of give the community presence spotlight. So I just, I appreciate that you put this together. It looks really nice.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And just to, it's in the, in the document, the presentation, that we wanted to thank you for the support we've had in the past, of course, and we really appreciate it. I think we're, for the population of Crafton, the support is very good. And, and we, as you know, and we, we really appreciate that. It's something we count on. We leverage that money in many ways, for other ways, like regional asset, district, state money, and it really helps a lot. It really makes the, the programs and the place and the, the whole project worthwhile doing, knowing that the support of the community is behind us in a specific way.
Absolutely. Mutual collaboration society here. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, sure. Anytime.
So...
Thank you.
So I think what we, what we want to do is we have just a few line items, including the library's request. And I, having talked with them earlier today, even though we have not officially talked about that addition, I've asked Dr. J to put it in here, so that we can quickly go over the items that have changed. I believe they're all based on our requests from our last, last meeting. So, I wonder if we can get through these pretty quickly. I need to read whatever's under that.
Yeah, well, you know, there, there isn't really too much to, to review in terms of changes. There were only a few really major comments that came out of the last budget workshop. So, basically, I, I only went ahead and printed out the general fund and capital projects, new implementing fund, just because there were no changes to the road program or sewer program, so why did you write some paper that you've already seen? With the general fund, the main changes that were requested at the last workshop were to double the lighted property demo, to incur the full projected cost of the 2028 bar demo. So that went up $20,000 to $40,000. We also doubled the shade tree maintenance budget to $60,000. Now, just to provide a little bit of background on that, we got this morning from our, we was on the Penn State Extension Campus, just sort of a very... just sort of a very basic spreadsheet of these are how many dead trees, you know, shade trees we have, these are how many trees are considered in poor health, and how many of those we're recommending that we're gonna have to sooner or later take down. So, just kind of budgeting on the high end of, you know, it might be two thousand per a large tree. That's about as high as we've seen, two thousand, twenty-five hundred a pop. We've got about, I think it is thirty-two in total. A few of those are small enough that Public Works might be able to take them down.
You're saying thirty-two that are dead?
That they're recommending come down. There, there are ten that are dead at this point, because we had Susan walk the borough towards the end of 2018, and she identified several that, you know, Public Works was willing to take down.
And where, I was gonna ask where most of those are located?
Um, so we don't, we don't have the location of the dead trees in the spreadsheet. He just gave us the number, so we could do, you know, ten, half a thousand foot view in lieu of the full report being saved.
So we'll have the full report on that.
The ones that are, they're in poor condition, we, they're kind of, you know, all over the place. I'd say probably more in the flats than anywhere else, and some on Stuben Street. But so, you know, they listed the reason for why they think that those particular ones need to come down. There are about thirty more that, you know, with pruning, are likely to recover, but anyway.
RJ, how many trees in total do we have in the borough, just ballpark it?
Four hundred and sixty-six. I think.
That's fine. What's the exact for tonight?
Um, it's somewhere right around five hundred. So, anyway, the, the sixty thousand should cover those demos, you know, or, excuse me, not demos, those removals, you know, with economy of scale that you get from a contractor, being able to, you know, get out a contract of that size. And then we should probably be able to handle quite a bit of pruning as well. I mean, we'll see overall, but ultimately, you know, that's, that's, um, that's a good way to start off and catch up. Basically, we should be able to catch up on mostly not all of the sorely needed removals in this first year and get started on the pruning. But those are sort of the priority one trees, as Rob would call them. There was also forty thousand dollars added to the community development budget under the design and mobility improvements, I believe is how that line item is worth it, to accommodate, you know, whoever council goes with. It's right around in that ballpark for the zoning code update, with, you know, getting a professional planning firm for that. So, also, thank you to Marcia for catching the typo under the senior dinner expense line, which ended up as eight hundred instead of eight thousand, which is where it was in 2019 as well, so that has been fixed. So that was, you know, the, sort of the list of the really major requests that came out of the first budget workshop. So those have all been added in. Some of the other major changes.
Can I ask, go up the zoning amount? So you're saying it's forty thousand, it's increased, or it's now forty thousand?
There was ten thousand, and there is sort of, you know, to have room to do, either if you want to do community sign designs or just, you know, some general, you know, whatever, adding benches.
So is that enough, like, I understand there's not been an award made?
Right.
It's, it's kind of the average between the cost of the two. So, you know, whatever you all choose, either some of that will be incurred this year or it'll all be incurred next year, or, you know, but it's gonna be.
Okay, so it's enough to cover either one, it's enough, but, but then, there would be or there would not be the, the additional monies for the marketing signage, et cetera?
Um, well, I mean, I guess that just depends on what you choose, or you could just bump it up even more to accommodate either.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, so why was the ten thousand put in? And if we're only increasing it to fifty thousand, are we now eliminating the purpose of the ten thousand that was put in?
Well, there wasn't really an explicit plan for that, but it was more so.
But I think that we have had discussion about some of the stuff that you and I volunteered to work on.
Right.
So.
I think it was just, you know, if, if we weren't taking that particular action next year, it would be good to still have room to do certain things. Like, we paid for the supplies at the block party.
My point is, is an increase of forty thousand, it absorbs the ten thousand we had for other purposes.
It does, yes.
Into the purpose of the zoning RFP, so should the increase be more than forty thousand?
It certainly could.
And I don't, let me put it this way. We know that the DCD funds are out there, we could apply, it's rolling, so we may not even need to use that entire budget, because, you know, halfway through this thing, DCD may grant, give us the grant funds. But I urge us, if we're going to be moving forward with the zoning, that we simultaneously apply for the grant, so we can, you know, see if we can lower that line item, or we won't have to use all of that line item.
Yeah, that's entirely, that's entirely possible. And, you know, the, the other thing that we want, you know, we want to look at is certainly, as the, there's some expectation that revenue will go up. I mean, what you're basically saying is, are you saying you would like to just see another ten thousand dollars in that budget?
What I'm saying is, it's, I, I get a sense that you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, right? Because you had the ten thousand with the purpose of something else and intent of something else. You're increasing it by forty thousand when you need fifty, so you're robbing the ten thousand dollars from an agenda that you had, somebody had in mind to do something with. So I'm saying is, you're shortchanging the future. Now, I understand, we should be pursuing other people who want to invest in that sort of thing, with grants, like activity, but you can't budget based on a whole, okay?
Right, exactly, exactly.
I would rather spend ten thousand dollars and buy some, some water.
The way I'll put it is, I will always be happy to see more money in a budget for community development, so I wouldn't complain.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I mean, we could, you know, we, we could go back through and take some of these things away.
No, I mean, I think that, well, you know, here's.
If you put it into overlay something, then, you know, we're saying we're steps on a priority.
If we jump down to total protected reserve drawdown after the other things we're gonna talk about, we're, you know, at roughly ninety, that would give us, you know, it would put us at an even hundred. I know that the manager's a little concerned, but we have a healthy reserve budget, and it, what used, what has happened over the last couple of budget cycles, when there's been a projected drawdown, we ended up not having to drawdown.
I mean, at least for this, I can only vouch fully for 2019.
But I do think that, if I remember correctly, it was, it was previous to saying the same thing, because we did end up with more. So I think one of the things that this council is trying to do is to make sure that our, that in 2020, especially with our new council, that they have the funds to, you know, really get, get some stuff over the finish line that we've been working on moving forward for the last few years. So, does, and what is, anybody else think about?
I mean, I think we're right.
To leave it at, at a total of fifty?
Yeah, I mean, that is.
Yeah.
But it's not enough to cover the other programs and activities that you had planned for them. So you're cutting activities by underfunding that budget.
So, I guess what my question is, define the activities outside of the zoning, right?
So basically, anything that we would do, new, remember, like at the last, you know, the last meeting, we, it was two meetings ago at this point, and we, we started talking about, you know, doing some more marketing pieces to, you know, to essentially, you know, help with, you know, putting, you know, putting more information, marketing.
Does, does the RFP cover all of the stakeholder engagement workshops, all of the things that might happen? So if there is nothing outside of that RFP that needs to be accounted for, because it's going into the RFP.
In the next cycle, yes.
Right?
It's part, everything that we've got on the table.
And then.
So, go ahead.
Also with the zoning, depending on when we start the zoning, and then, and especially if we do get some assistance from DCD, this, that project could, the, the pay on that could be split over two budget cycles.
That's entirely possible to.
Right.
Yeah, because I mean, we, we've been talking a nine to, to twelve month kind of timeframe. And it, it sounds as though the will of the new council is likely to, well, first and foremost, given where we are now, I don't think we're, we're not gonna put that until the new council comes in to make a choice. So that puts us in January, and, you know, I think you're probably.
Well, let me, let me put it this way, I don't think it's really worth arguing over. I say we should just throw another ten K in there, we use it, we use it, we don't, we don't, we draw it down, we draw it down. But there are other, other areas to really, more strategic, like spend our time this evening to discuss.
Okay, so.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
It's a fair compromise.
Fred?
I just wanted to say something about the trees. I found that as I go further on into a season, and putting out and requesting bids for cutting down trees, it gets less and less as we get further into a winter season. So there could be money that would be saved there that could be moved over.
That, that's a possibility, but we also have bigger, not just the, the tree removal, but other things that have to get addressed. So.
Okay. Okay.
So, Eric, you're good, you're suggesting, yeah, putting a ten back, and Phillip, you're okay with that? Alice, Fred?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Uh, Marcia?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
And Brad said he was, so that's what we'll do.
Um, the, so that, that was all of the discussed major expenses requested at the workshop number one change. The other major changes that just, you know, through the drafting process, either you gain more information or, you know, departments in the conversation, department heads may make certain requests. So there are just a couple of major ones that have either gone up or down in this section. First one is, I suggested putting another twenty thousand to the police vehicle purchase line item, just due to the fact that the models have changed recently. And so seventy thousand used to get you two cars, now it gets you a car and a half, generally. We were able to achieve some savings when we purchased the once later this year. But that was because it was over 2019 models, and at this point, you know, twenty-twenty cars are basically out. So I would suggest increasing that line item from seventy to ninety thousand. We should be back on our one car per year schedule after this, but they're looking to add another vehicle to the fleet, so they're not running all three cars one hundred percent of the time. Because, for example, if one breaks, here we are, you know, you, you're, you're, you're short until it gets out of the shop. So there's that line item. I would suggest adding fourteen thousand to the Public Works equipment purchase line item, because the Public Works director is looking into purchasing a bucket truck, which is around nineteen, twenty thousand to help with the shade tree maintenance going forward, rather than trying to rent the equipment, borrow the equipment from another municipality. You know, it's, it's something that he thought would be an asset. So subsequently, there's been a reduction slightly of the recommended equipment rental section, budget in that section. But so, that was an additional fourteen thousand to line four thirty-seven-four he had requested. The Shade Tree Commission has also requested up to fifteen thousand dollars of budget for maintenance work on the park trees, not street trees, but of course, you know, the trees that are on the public.
Phillipson? I, I like to hold off on the bucket truck. Just, I, I, I know what the cost, but that's gotta be used pieces of equipment, and I want to have a health and safety procedure in place, put in, in place before we go. And as we go down the line here, I think we're gonna be better off outsourcing this and pushing the liability out to a, a outside vendor until we have proper equipment and safety procedures in place.
Okay.
I agree.
So, for the record, the Public Works Department does currently periodically rent and use a bucket truck for smaller tree removals?
Yeah, but the, to the extent of the work that has to be done, I think we need to have our procedures in place. And we probably should have, twenty twenty-one could be the year that we buy a newer or new piece of equipment with all the safety features that we would need to minimize our liability to maintain the trees.
Right, so just to be clear, this is still under the assumption, I mean, that's, I'll, I'll let our own, but this is still under the assumption that we would be hiring professionals to do the large trees, because a thirty, you know, a thirty-inch diameter tree, they're never gonna have the skills to do it.
So, I mean, just to clarify your practice, I want to make sure I'm on the same page as you. Generally, what you're saying is, RJ is saying, you know, you gotta, they do, you know, all carnage, you haven't grabbed their bucket truck every so often.
Not yet, but we are working on that in general. Right now, they rent it every so long.
So, your point is that they're still gonna use a bucket truck regardless of the safety issues that you may have in place? But I want to, you're, you're basically trying to say that you were in favor of not purchasing something outright?
This year.
This year, just to be certain, because you'd rather have, you know, all of the trees.
Again, a better, you know, a per, perhaps a newer, better piece of equipment.
And a place to park it.
Right, a place to park it, there you go.
I mean, it's the element of the room, right? Are you gonna put it down in the junkyard at the bottom of the hill and let it rock?
Right.
Well, there, there you go.
Yes.
So, and, and, and I think, you know, to Phillip's point about liability, if you've got something that you don't have to go beg, borrow, or rent, you're likely to use it more than if we don't have the things in place. So, you know, I think I would, I would agree with that. I mean, you know, letting them know that, that, you know, our, our goal is, you know, a better, better piece of equipment with more safety in place.
Maybe walk, and walk before you ride on the trees a little bit more.
Yeah, so, how, what does everybody think about that?
I would agree with that compromise.
Okay, Alice?
Am I understanding that we are going to go out and buy this new equipment?
Well, that's what he was asking for, and what Phillip is saying, Phillip is saying, well, based on the amount of rental we do, but Phillip is saying, with the price that is being proposed, it's probably used equipment. And, you know, he makes some, some good points about wanting to make sure that we have, you know.
The safety, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's why, that's why I switched to buying new cars, so that I got all the safety equipment on it.
Exactly.
You know?
Nineteen thousand dollars, Alice, doesn't seem like enough money to own a bucket truck.
Okay.
You're in buyer's dollars.
Yeah. Okay. So, anybody have any objections to striking that?
Well, I, I think that Rob should be in the room talking about this. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm sure there's more than.
Oh, I said I don't disagree, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, I, I think Rob should be here, we should, we should maybe, you know, move this until he's in the room and, and talk about it. Because I, I don't think, I mean, I don't know, but aren't there other things the bucket truck can be used for besides cutting down trees? Like maybe putting up those soldiers' photos on the poles?
Okay, so here.
Well, that was just his reasoning to.
Well, or, or I mean, the split, split the difference is, before we go down this route, why don't we spec out through Co-Stars what, what's out there, like, see what's out there in Co-Stars that's within, like, the past five years model, right? And do a, figure out what the delta is between new and used. But looking at that price, it seems as if this model most likely is older than ten years. And if, if that's not the case, I mean, yeah, let him bring it to us.
So, so what's going on to Tuesday's meeting?
Yeah, see, and ask, ask.
Yeah, yeah, let's put it on for discussion, I knew that's a one.
Okay, all right, that will give us enough, still give us enough time to.
So, we should motion to advertise today. However, once you advertise the budget and take public comment and discussion, you can make an edit before final approval of it. So I will take it off for now, and then we can bring Rob in on Tuesday. And if this is just the final item that everyone has to make a decision on, that will just be the one thing that, well, I mean, unless somebody has public comment that sways anyone's opinion on any line item. But I think that unless there's any major concern other than this, it's best to keep it moving, just schedule advertising wise. So, I would be noted that.
So I think the takeaway, the takeaway is, it's gonna come off for advertising, that we have the room to make a change to that, based on input that we might get from Rob, and, and our decision. And that we're gonna ask Rob to be here on Tuesday to talk about it. Does that work for you, Fred?
Yeah, yeah, good.
Can you put on there, maybe a sky lift or, you know, scissors?
Well, I, I think the fellow boards director should sort of give us a cafe, a menu of.
Right, and, and the thing is, is, you know, I think there's a lot to be said for looking at, you know, as, as Eric says, the proper storage, your concern about, about safety and safety features. Maybe this needs to be a little more long-range and strategic, and may need to be a little.
Yeah, maybe those, that fourteen K would go towards a payment on a newer or satisfactory piece of equipment.
Okay, so let's move on.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to leave in five minutes.
Yeah, and.
Are, are we gonna get a consensus on the library thing, or?
I, does anybody have any objection to what the library has asked for?
No.
All right, we're good.
Great, it's already in the line item. So, the.
Aside from that, is there something else that?
Aside from that, is there something else that?
$60,000 came off of the budget. Because we got the GEDF grant. And so essentially that matches the DCT grant. Yeah.
I'm sorry I have to leave.
That's, that's, I mean, that's, honestly, there's not a ton more to talk about on here. The only other line item sandwiched in there in between library and Public Works is, and I mean, you're good to go, Fred. It's not, this is.
I, I have some friends to be here for. Because I'm, I'm still pretty adamant about it. I think that we're doing a disservice by leaving our brick streets un-repaired. And I understand that the only solution that Public Works is recommending is to hire out massive swaths of 50 and 75,000 each. And I don't think anyone has the appetite to do that. I do, however, think that investing in the Public Works with a properly equipped vehicle and a staff member that is dedicated on some set portion of their time to focus on repairing potholes in brick in this community would be great optics, very well received, and very useful.
So my, my comment to that is, I hear you loud and clear that we need to have a budget approved before the end of the year. There is a, an opportunity to reopen the budget when the new council comes in. And I think that we can certainly, depending on the, the new council, look at how something like that might happen and.
I think in what we advertise, it should be in what we advertise.
So my question is this. So to your point, we need to dedicate more resources to, to the road funds, right? So we have a current reserve or road fund that we, you know, the mills are set for that. So the question is, do we dedicate some of the mills to specifically address this and, and, you know, budget for that? Or do we need to increase the millage on the road, on the road fund? And that's the question, because, you know, obviously.
Oh, my.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm asking. So what, what, what do we do? Do we do less paving? Do we, how, how do we sequester the resource to, to achieve these ends?
This is starting to sound like another, another budget workshop, because I.
Oh, yeah.
So we have a meeting, when's our next meeting?
Our next meeting is on Tuesday.
Is that.
A regular meeting?
Regular meeting.
Yeah.
I think the engineer and Rob should be here for these discussions.
I agree.
I, I cannot say that the Public Works Director requested an additional employee this year. That's all the information I have.
But that, we understand that. But we have a council member who is pushing the idea of, you know, that, that maybe that's something we need to look at. So I would suggest that we don't, that we don't have, well, the people we need here to have that discussion.
Yes.
So what is possible for a third budget workshop? And so keep us on track. You know, and, and if worse comes to worse, we may have to approve the, the RFI, approve the budget at the end of December as opposed to earlier in December. You know.
That would be new.
May I ask a question to that?
Sure.
Do, in order to vote on that, do you have to be present? Or is it like a regular meeting where you can vote electronically?
You can vote remotely.
Okay.
So if we're talking about staff members, we should definitely hit to the projected reserve drawdown change and expected major reduction of 2021 time expenses in 2021, which is the bottom section of this paper. So the changes.
Let's just stop right there. Basically, we have an issue that we said is going to precipitate a third budget workshop. So when can we do that?
Well, I think if we sent an ad in to the Post Gazette, we might be able to get it in midweek. You have to have at least 24 hours notice. So that might push us to next Thursday or Friday.
We basically only scheduled two in our advertising.
Yes, there were pretty minor changes from the first workshop requested.
Yeah.
So, um, yep.
Okay, so basically, we have to advertise the, a, a new meeting.
Yep.
It has to be done in the Post Gazette because of our timing.
Right.
And you're saying we could get the advertising in by when?
She's saying the 13th?
They, well, they typically, for the Post Gazette, they usually need to get it in the Thursday of the week before. So I, unless there's, unless we can try and do like a rush next day ad, but they may not have room. I mean, basically, it's just going to take until tomorrow to figure out. It may be that the earliest that we can advertise for is November 15th, at which point, if we're placing our budget ad for inspection, that would definitely put us at scheduling a meeting on December 23rd to actually adopt the budget. Just because of how we have to run it and the amount of time we need for public comment.
I'm always game for that. I know I'm the minority, so.
You're always game for what?
I come any day of the week at any time.
Yep.
Or we, let me answer this. I mean, I, I, I agree, I agree with Eric.
Hold, hold, hold on for a minute, Alice, hold on.
Yeah, never mind, never mind. I'll be quiet, I don't have a calendar.
Okay.
Just going back to the issue, you know, I think we can, we can really, we as the policymakers need to set the decision, like, set the policy. The engineer and Public Works Director will do what they need to do to achieve the policy goal. So the question is, do we want to allocate resources towards brick reconstruction and repair in 2020? And we have a reserve, we have a road fund that's reserved for this, all right? And from what I understand, we haven't been fully using that fund, partly due to scheduling issues and other, other issues. But realistically, I mean, to achieve what Eric's asking for, I, I, what's the most efficient mechanism to say, we're going to set aside $80,000 or $100,000 out of that fund to start tasking ourselves with achieving the goal, the policy goal? So what's the best way to do that? Does council have to motion to set that forth? Do we put it in the budget as a line item in the reserve, pardon, the road fund?
So, so. Do we have any idea how much we are actually talking about? And that's where, that's where the engineer and Public Works comes in, unless we're going to pull some numbers out of our hat.
We did, I mean, these, these times, I mean, I've been, you, you and I, RJ, or RJ, Philip and I have been in, I have some engineer meetings back earlier this year. We kind of talked about this stuff. And the numbers were always very.
I mean, yeah, brick, brick reconstruction is expensive. But to be clear, you can also just select that as a street to be done in your annual road program.
Right.
And right now, we have the full budgeted, which again, the road program, because there were no changes to it, is not going to be in your pile of sheets unless you brought the ones from last budget workshop meeting, and I apologize. But.
There are three copies out there, we could take a quick look.
There's also that. We have the full slate of paving work that we were expecting to do left over from this year, as well as another 400,000 construction costs alone that are set aside in the 2020 new money. And I mean, that certainly could accommodate at least one brick street, even as part of a contract, if you can find a contractor, which I'm not saying you can't, but if you can find somebody that.
Yeah, I think what Eric's.
I'm not saying a contractor.
I understand that, I'm just, that's also an option.
So just so, I, I want to be, just chime in here for just a split second, so I can stay real going with this. Your, your, I, your points are well made, I get it. We've, we've talked about this a million times, but we're, we're upset. And I think most of the council and most of the committee do want to keep their brick streets. To Phil's point, he makes a good point in the sense where he phrases it the way he does, and he says, you know, they, the, we set the policy, they all achieve the policy goals. I think there's a lot of, that's a really great thing that he just said. And it just dawned on me that the longer that we dither, in a, in a sense, as like, just whether it's this council or the past one or the future ones, we have 32 miles of street and only eight miles of brick street. And each time that something, we ask for more information or we can't quite figure it out, that becomes eight, that becomes seven and a half, that becomes six, that becomes five, and so on down the road. Eventually, there will be no more brick streets because we couldn't find any bearing in what we wanted to do. So to that point, I think he makes a, a great, I, I really think that's a good point. So the numbers, it just comes down to just numbers. So, you know, at, at some point, I guess the question just has to be, we have to just kick it, we have to do it.
Yeah, but, so my question is, what number are we talking about if we're trying to do something?
Yeah, well, that comes down to a question for you, RJ. He's recommending that we have personnel, all right? A full-time personnel or half-time personnel. And I'm going to just address that element of room. All right, we know that there are members of our Public Works crew that are gonna, that are coming upon retirement, right? We need to start recruiting, getting people in, into the department. We need to make the investments that were called to, to make. So the question is, really, does Public Works salary line item, like, do we need to add more there? Or can we, does it, where, where does the money come from? Does it come from the regular budget? Or does it, can it be pulled out of, out of the road fund? Like, how can we pay for personnel? Let's say if it's a full-time person.
The, the road fund has to be reserved for the road program. It's, it's specifically from, and I, I know the next question is going to be, what does personnel count? You know?
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
So however, however, every single year.
While you're on it, would the equipment count? Would a truck and outfitting of the truck, would that count as a work on, uh, expense?
It's for permanent improvements to the cartway, is the way that we broke up, that's it.
So the pavement that we bought, the asphalt pavement, was that bought out of the asphalt?
General fund.
How's general fund?
However, the materials that we would use for the pavement can be budgeted as part of the road fund. So, but.
So in general, what we're talking about is not a road fund expense.
But if what council really wants to commit to do is guarantee that we're hiring a Public Works employee, which likely, if it's a full-time person, they're going to be doing other things in bricklaying every single day, which is why it gets dodgy trying to say, oh, we're budgeting employee, road fund. What you can do every single year, when you set the millage, is allocate however much of it to a road fund or to a general fund or any other sort of road funds. Most communities don't even use road funds at all. They use the general fund, which is straight up pay for the paving program. And the policy choice here is that there want, there, there is a desire to guarantee an absolute minimum, which is, you know, quite significant. It's over half a million dollars to the paving program and during the construction thereof. However, that can be changed every year. So you could calculate basically how much millage generates the cost of an employee plus all of the benefits, and just allocate that to the general fund for personnel and bump up that line item. It's really, you know, I mean, that, but that's how, if you are looking to hire somebody and use that same funding, that's what you have to do.
So at the end of the day, are we trying to figure out a number or several numbers tonight? Or are we going to have a more deliberative conversation about this at a third workshop?
I, I'm fine with whatever, but the question is, would you know what the cost of an FTE is?
Yeah, it's about 60,000 for salary, and our health plans are around $20,000.
So 85,000.
Yeah.
Get a person to do $400,000 worth of work.
Yeah, well, four, I mean, is it 400,000?
Well, we'll use our street as an example, which is, I mean, not to be.
Well, one year does not a street fix. This is a long-term investment into the, the sustainable improvement of our collective brick streets. That's not going to fix a street in one year. So you can't say it's 400,000 off the top.
Yeah, but you have to take off those bricks. Our streets are alive, I don't, it's, it's.
I, I don't, I don't, you don't need to get into the weeds.
Question, question.
Yeah, Philip?
I'll just create a solution. RJ, what is our road, road fund millage?
1.92.
1.92. Okay. This is something I've been thinking about for a while.
It's one-fourth of our total millage.
Yep, and we use those roads every day. So let's say, let's say we can't have an FTE. Let, let's say it's more effective to hire a contractor. Let's say the next council has to make the decision if they're going to make an investment. Let's say this council says, we're willing to bite the bullet and say, we're willing to, to raise the mills for the road fund and hope, I mean, and again, this is with the question of, can the next council raise taxes when they open the budget, or does that happen now?
I believe you have until March to set the millage because that's when the tax bills go up.
I understand.
I'm just getting back to the point. So if it's, if, what did you say for the police cars? 70, 90,000 minus a half would be 45,000 for a new police car?
Yes.
So would you say that that's a similar or non-dissimilar number for a truck for the road fund?
That's not even a half of the cost of the dump truck.
So a dump truck will be 90,000?
I believe the last one that we did was closer to 420,000.
So you're only getting 200,000 is what you would be adding to the general fund?
Well, we would finance the truck most likely because that's what we did with the last one.
So what would that add to the general fund?
Go to the back of debt service principal and interest. PNC dump truck fees, that's 471.351 and 472.351. That is a relatively new truck purchase. I believe it's on a five-year lease purchase agreement, which is common. So that's about $25,000 a year.
40,000 a year, okay. So there's, 85 and 25 get you, and then materials come out of the, where we already have money in the road fund, right? So in order to put a placeholder in perpetuity into this, a sustainable placeholder, you're looking at, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's 120,000 ish to this budget.
It would be about half a mil.
Correct?
Yes. I can't see that half a mil part of it.
Yes, it would.
If you could increase anything, a half a mil, I think that half the borough would be very upset. They're so upset over our roads. That is what I've heard mostly in our community is about our roads and how bad they are. And they keep saying, where is this road fund going? And they, no one really quite understands it.
But they're going to see.
Now, we need to have a workshop.
They're going to see substantial results in the coming year out of the backlog of paving and the planned paving for next year. So in the next year, they're going to see their dollars in action, even though that half mil isn't necessarily related to it. They're going to see a ton of work done on the roads next year.
An extremely large.
An extremely large road program next year. So I think the half mil is sellable and palatable, even though it's, it's not actually, that half mil is not actually paying for what is, what is to be paved next year. But this does set up the borough for success in maintaining those other streets. So catastrophic major paving doesn't have to happen with, with, what did you say? Those eight miles, correct?
Eight miles, yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll play those, I'll play with you, Eric, on this one. Just a quick question to RJ, since I, I've been wondering this for a while now. So let's say we decide that we were going to do exactly what you just said. And a moment ago, you said that some communities have the road fund and others don't, and somebody bought general bucket because they don't want to maintain the minimum?
Almost, I, I could find one community in our population range in Almanack County that has a road fund.
So to Alice's point, I think she makes a great point. And I've had these people ask me the same question. You know, what is the road fund, why do we pay it? Why is no road stone fixed, et cetera, et cetera, you know? So why can't we ask the question about just putting everything in the general fund and then having a better drawout of that one in 0.92 mil? Instead of spread it out and get some of those things that aren't necessarily used for.
That is, I, that has been negatively received when I have discussed it before. So I have not touched it.
Negative receive by whom, just to be clear?
Previous council or what?
Well, she's only been on one council.
Yours truly, right here.
Yep.
You know why? I fully confess this, we had 200,000 worth of free cash flow.
Oh, okay, I forget I even asked it. Just, let's just focus on the forward thing. Just, forget whatever was said before. And let's go just, just talk about it right now in lieu of this question, which is, people in brick streets want to keep them, and he's, he's genuinely right. So can we, can we have that discussion?
That's, that is all, I mean, that's just a council whether you want to have the discussion.
Absolutely. As manager of the borough, who I would want to weigh in on, if we have other communities that are in our size range, in our budget range, which are making this decision in a different way.
if we have other communities that are in our size range, in our budget range, which are making this decision in a different way, which presumably this would be maybe entering communities?
Um, no, I, I just took anyone that was between the population of 5 and 10,000 in Alany County.
Some of those are entering communities?
Not that many, actually. But I mean, hey, regardless, you know, the, the only one that uses it is Forest Hills. They have a one-mil road fund, one to seven-mil general fund. That's, that's who uses the road fund, so.
So my point was going to be.
I, I don't know that solving the, the collapse of the road fund is a solution to it. I mean, it seems like 1% to 3% can be taken off the top of what we've already budgeted to bring down a palatable addition of the 120,000 that we need to put in the, 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 the brick initiative. Seems like it's very doable, a little bit of pencil sharpening around the board. You know, like you said, that there may be 19,000 here and 10,000 there. A couple, a couple minutes later, you're, you're down to a number that might be only a few thousand dollars that's added to the general budget.
And the other thing, uh, RJ, you know, why don't you come, you know, let's say we have to schedule one other meeting, right? We, you come back with, all right, I'm gonna, you lower the, the mills out of the road fund, and we have to possibly raise the general fund mills, right?
Well, that's, I mean, it would just be a little bit back.
So, I'm, okay, so, yeah, I'm confused here. We're talking about rearranging the mills?
Rearranging?
We are not talking about adding more, more things to the steps.
Well, we, well, we have to figure out where it shakes out. Do, do we or do we not need to add more mills? Money's gotta come from somewhere. Do we have sufficient enough funds? When I see this $89,000 drawdown, I say to myself.
It's an additional drawdown to last workshop, just to be clear.
Okay, I, I say to myself, no, we don't have all the things.
So what was I wrong with? So this is the total drawdown?
No, that's the total change to the drawdown. The actual total drawdown is gonna be on the last page.
And how much is it?
And it is now, excuse me, last page of the red news, which is page four. And I think it's 150 something, yeah, 158,621. About, about 90,000 that reasonably, maybe even more. I mean, there's, there's, if, if we're doing some sort of zoning ordinance, um, you know, code update next year, 40 to 50,000, that's a one-time expense. Presumably, we're not going to have to spend crisis levels of shade tree stuff, so let's say another 30,000 comes off. Police vehicle purchase, we're probably not gonna buy one of them, maybe two of them every year. So I mean, just between all of that, uh, you, you know, you play this game every year, right, with the reserve drawdown? But you could have 120, 130 coming off of the 2021 budget, at which point, we're more or less breaking even with the general fund. So if you're looking at hiring personnel and you don't want to raise millage and you're hiring personnel to do road stuff, it would make sense to seesaw it.
I'd like to know what, I mean, this might be an executive session question, so I don't want to completely ask it, but, uh, you know, early, early outs for folks, you know, just like.
Yeah, that's all stuff that has to.
So, 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 so.
Let's have a discussion about.
Can I, can I finish my thought?
Sure.
So, so with regards to the budgeting process, I forgot my drink, but something's okay.
Well, my point was, let's make an entire next meeting just this question.
I, I agree with that.
Finally, just have some kind of finality to it. If we could halfway to the middle of it, it'd be better than not than doing this because it says come out in opportune time.
It would not be the first time you guys reopened the budget if you have to. You know how to do that.
When we pu, when we publish our budget, I'd like to have on the web, like, what word will we have a legally budget published? I'd like to just show the public the deltas and then maybe show them, this is, yeah, you're gonna publish your budget. But people want to see where this is aligned, what, what line items went up? And, you know, some of the stuff, like the shade tree stuff, explain, a simple explanation, you know, catch up on, uh, you know, per, per the shade tree inventory, this is, but has to happen. I think people just want an explanation because they're not gonna sit here and watch these meetings. They just need to know where the deltas are and why, and, and, and that, and that's simple.
Call out the deltas in the spreadsheet, maybe a narrative. Is there no, do we not do a narrative here?
I mean, we, you do it after it's.
After the budget is approved is generally where you have, when you have the narrative, like, you know.
I'd like to see a tabular narrative.
Sure, well, I mean, that's.
Any narrative.
Yeah, but there is a narrative, so we'll have opportunity to explain what people are getting from their.
Right, but I think Philip is saying he'd like to see that as part of what's, of the budget that actually gets advertised?
Or on, or on the website, so they can see what the difference is from year, year for year.
Well, yeah.
So you mean like one of those graphs that say like, you know, there's a good tree and it's real happy, it's, it's like, you know.
I mean, I can pop in another column that's a change in every line.
I, I think the delta column makes sense, but I.
I'm gonna leave all my comments in comments column.
Why is it not, why is it not our practice to have a narrative when we advertise the budget?
Because, well, I don't know. It's, it's not a good answer to just say, because that's how local government always does it, but, I mean, that's.
It's generally not.
That's how local government.
That's not to say that it's not.
But it's such a contentious time here in this borough right now, and the money is obviously what gets people's blood boiling. Having a narrative explaining, we're making some investments here.
So does this sound like something that you can accomplish in the time that we need to?
Yeah, I could for sure, you know, I could throw, put it, I shouldn't say throw together, because that sounds very passive. I could certainly put together a few pages that was just a narrative description. I mean, the, it's, a budget message can vary from, some people like to use a one-page that introduces things. Some things like with cappers, you're getting 100 pages of it.
So we could extend a lot.
Yeah, you already have.
Half of it.
Yeah.
So basically, what we would go for this year.
This would be the draft of the narrative.
Oh, you would like, oh, that's okay.
That's what I'm saying.
And then maybe go back to.
With a little bit of your better style than this, this is a working draft, but you understand what I'm saying.
Oh, for sure.
Advertising, advertising and about this with a this goes a lot further than just putting numbers out there subject to people's.
And I, and we could, I would say that we would add, you know, some of, some of the key changes from the first budget. But yeah, so we were talking two pages.
I, yeah, that's for sure doable. I will say, I don't believe in previous years, you know, we could start putting the advertised budget online. Typically, what happens is you run an ad, it says, if anybody wants to inspect it, it's in the office. Literally, nobody comes in. Last year, we had Roy, so that was an exciting turnout, but he showed up to inspect it. But I mean, you know, and, and then.
Thanks, Roy. You got it.
To them, the general public doesn't know.
No, I agree with that. I, I don't have, I don't, yeah, so, so, and just because the general, the, the past practice is you can come and inspect, there is no reason why we can't put a link.
Well, I mean, that.
You know, as long as it says draft all over it.
You know, part of the.
Which is a new thing I started doing.
Yes.
The drafts, so we could put it online, you know?
I'm talking about is also kind of like an in-house marketing effort, which goes a long way to some of his.
Absolutely. I think we're all in agreement. You said you can do it.
Good.
You've clarified it.
It doesn't sound like we're advertising it tomorrow, so I've got a few time.
All right, so then we're, we're back to a third workshop?
I mean.
My question is.
I, I don't need a third workshop because we came up with the number. We're okay putting that, that 120 in and then justifying it as we go.
I should probably let the public works director know that we're hiring employees.
Whoa, whoa.
Well, no, 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 wait.
Pump the brakes on that.
Why, why can't the next council meeting, why can't we talk about the next council meeting?
We could. We could have, we could plan, no, can, can we talk budget at our next meeting?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't think of a reason why we couldn't.
So we can plan a little bit longer meeting to address this?
Yeah, as a set agenda as this.
Well, we have some other agenda items.
Okay.
So we would add this to, to the business meeting?
Do we have a really huge?
No.
I, I mean, it's pretty, it's all pretty routine stuff, but like you do have to.
Six hours.
Oh, we've approached it before, so that would be.
Right, so, so I think that's a good idea. If we can do that, then we don't have to advertise because it's, it's an existing open meeting.
Technically, you just have to have a budget opening meeting, you know, it's, it's like 30 days before you advertise it.
Yeah, let's just tack it on.
So we've done that, okay. So then we'll take up the rest of this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there anything else on this that we need to discuss tonight? I think we've all read it.
Can I just call out something that's really exciting to me? Which is, we didn't make it to the, any detail, the reduction of the general fund by $60,000.
We, we all read that.
Oh, okay, all right.
But, so we can announce, yes, so, yes. Let's announce, you know, announce that publicly, that with this additional grant that we've gotten, it's gonna cover the match for a larger grant.
They basically match each other. Now, the assumption is, of course, that eventually the full park rehab project will clear over half a million dollars, which once we do the third playground, you know, with hopefully future funds, you, GTOP or other programs, we're gonna cross that.
Okay.
This year, we're getting two playgrounds in full, right? We're not gonna put much of anything into it.
And it's very good.
Three parks in one pool, so three parks in one pool, that's pretty good.
Yep, absolutely.
And we're doing. We're, we're going to do one or two most likely Wood, Wood Park.
And when we do this.
Oh, thank God, Wood Park.
Well, it's just, it's the one that fits in, so that way.
All right, and we're gonna keep that one.
Yeah, we're gonna keep our, whatever.
We got really good.
We're gonna keep it. Katri has a catalog, Katri's eyes and.
All right.
Footnote to your budget, you, you can list these things and people will be like, oh.
I mean, we were, we were.
So, yes, you know, I think you're right, a summary, a summary of the grant activity for this year.
Yeah, if that wasn't already everybody's foregone conclusion, then yes, that has to be.
Hey, who knows? I mean, this is, it's all Greek, this one's Greek too.
What would our budget be if we took on all those expenses on our own?
Right, so.
That's a number that people need to see.
We would blast through all of them.
We wouldn't be able to do it. We wouldn't be able to do it, and this is, this is some serious work, this is a accomplishment.
Name appears somewhere in the text.
Right, there you go, and Fontana, right?
And, wait.
No?
No, Fontana, Fontana is supported in the, in the background with party.
Oh, that's new.
Yes.
Good, good to find out.
Well, then it just takes a T.
Right, okay.
What did they say about Fontana?
Oh, that, that he supported in the background, um, some of the, the, um, work that Dizzy's office did to recommend. So both, both of those legislators need to be noted in the appropriate grant.
Follow along that.
Okay, so basically, it sounds like we're ready to close our meeting, that we are going to plan to extend our business meeting on Tuesday to allow for a more detailed conversation about.
Extra fun for everybody.
Yes.
That'll get rammed sometime. Well, I'm gonna have to tell him it's gonna have to be.
We're gonna have an intermission with a break, everyone's gonna go to concessions and come back.
There you go.
To resume the story.
There you go. All right, so I think we're adjourned for tonight, and, um, we will see everybody on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, Kalata, very much for letting me.
How?
Hit the red button.
All right, um, are we gonna?